Ready. All right, I call the July 1st, 2025 Stevens County Plan Commission Meeting to order. Dennis, you mind opening for the word of prayer?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and thank you for many blessings of life. Thank you for our country. Come to meetings like this. Bless us and bless the...
Amen. All right, I'll start with roll call.
Chairman Scott Stroud.
Here.
Vice Chairman Brett Ivester. Commissioner Mark Randall. Commissioner Cody Cobb.
Here.
Commissioner Dennis Black.
Here.
All right, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Everybody should have a copy of the agenda in their packet. Anyone see any changes need be made or questions, comments, or entertain a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All right, got a motion and second. All in favor of approval of the agenda say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, I have also the minutes from the June 3rd, last meeting in your packet. Any questions, comments on those? Oh, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay. Go on to the hearing part.
Thank you guys for being here tonight. Planning Director Christian Hamilton is out this week on vacation with his family. So I'm gonna just do the best I can here for him. I'll read through each item. After I read through an item, I will ask if anyone wishes to speak in favor or in opposition. At that time, individuals are welcome to come up to the podium. Be sure that you state your name and your address. And each individual will be given 10, up to 10 minutes to speak. Okay, I will start with item number one. Our first item is a conditional use request from Dana Horton, 692 Crawford Circle, Tacoa, parcel 051C057. The property is currently zoned as residential single. The proposed action to be taken is to grant a conditional use permit to allow for the raising of pigs as show stock. The property is 0.67 acres and is zoned for residential use. The property owner with her daughters would like to raise pigs as show stock. The property has adequate space to allow for two pigs with a shelter, concrete slab, and fencing. The property owner stated that the area is clean daily. The property owner states in the application that after the animals are shown, they will be sold and off the property by October 31st, 2025. The property owner states that if this is something that proves successful, they would potentially keep additional pigs from November 2025 through February of 2026 and so forth. Recommendation from staff is to approve the request as submitted contingent upon animals being removed by October 31st, 2025. An extension on the conditional use could be requested provided there are no code enforcement concerns. Are there any questions or discussion from the board?
No.
All right, is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the request?
Okay, Dana Horton, 692 Crawford Circle, Tacoa. And this is really more of a civil matter. My former husband filed a complaint just to be spiteful after finding out that we were gonna show these animals. None of the neighbors were even aware that pigs were on the property at the time because we were taking great care of them. I have someone who comes and hauls off the manure weekly, who goes and just takes some, fertilizes his blueberry bushes so there's no smell. Hadley here is out every morning before school during the school year and taking care of the pigs, feeding and watering them. There was never any issue of concern, so it was just a complaint that was filed out of meanness. Anyway, I have letters in support of the girls being allowed to keep the pigs on the property from neighbors all around us, from all sides. So if y'all would like those, I'm not sure how to do that. I also have a letter from my daughter, my older daughter, who's also showing a pig, who is at a Bible study right now, so she was not able to make it. But I do have a letter from her. So... And so, the pigs are housed at the far back of the property in an old concrete floor-covered shelter. It was like an old shop that was cleaned out and prepared for the animals to live in. They're fed and watered multiple times a day. The reason that they are needing to be on my property rather than a school barn is because I teach at Levonia Elementary School. And so the girls are showing through Franklin County 4H and Franklin County FFA. So they are not allowed to use the Stevens County school barn because they're not showing through Stevens County. All the neighbors have had no issues. They did not even, they were not even aware until we went and let them know about tonight's meeting.
Do you have a problem with the recommendation? I don't know if you heard it or not, the way that Christian has written it. Approval upon animals being removed by October 31st, 2025. And then if you wanted to have future animals, you'd have to come back for an extension. Is that accepted?
Okay. I think that's fine. I would prefer not to have to continue coming back, but...
I think, I think, uh... Just, you know, I think this is what he's doing is sort of a trial thing, so that if there were, given this trial period, if we don't have any code enforcement violations, then at that time, we would consider a extension for you. So I know that's a little bit...
I would kinda like to make a motion if we don't have it, just let them keep on rocking and rolling, I mean...
And Mike, I...
Not having to come back.
Not having to come back. In my personal opinion, if we're not having complaints other than matters she talked about, which is nothing to do with neighbors, if we're not having neighbors complain, if we're not having code and the marshals go out, I mean, this little kid's trying to learn responsibility and they're going out. And I've said this before up here, when I moved out of Mama's house and I lived on Oak Way Estates, I had to show big, couldn't have cow. Goats weren't a thing back then. I had to show big in the subdivision. If you take care of it, you can, you can make that, that project happen for, for kids and parents and make sure responsible. What I'd like to see us do is, if there's no problems, just keep on rocking with it, is me personally. That way they're not coming back up here because less than, we're just, we got there on a daily basis. That's just my opinion, whatever y'all think about, I mean.
Yeah, I'm thinking, you know, we're approving something for this one lot that maybe all the other lots don't have, so I think it would need to be some sort of expiration date or... I realize that's...
Well, I know historically that there's some of us on this board that have kind of, when it comes to subdivisions, we try to preserve the subdivision and the privacy and, you know... But I tend to agree with Scott that maybe we look at having a first expiration, kinda see how things are going, and then, and then maybe we go into a, all right, well then, you know, we're...
What's your thoughts?
For a longer period of time.
Yeah.
The next one could be, we could make it longer, you know, as long as your girls are in school, or I don't know, I don't know.
I crave it, Brett. But I do also think that as long as those, if the marshal has to go out there, if it's a complaint, like the first complaint, then I think that's no the boy, we don't, I mean, we don't worry about that complaining, him going out there.
The person who complained is living on Arlo Todd Road at the Haversham County line, so he doesn't even live in the neighborhood, so...
Yeah, I understand that. That's really the thing.
Yeah, that's, that's my, my thought process is, is none of us on this board would have known those pigs were here if it wasn't for a domestic situation.
Agreed, yeah.
And if they're doing that, that means that A, they're doing a good job taking care of them, B, they got a pile full of letters here from Neighbor Center doing a good job and they don't mind. So we're, we're really worried about somebody that's not even living in the area of this... We're worried, I mean, we're, we're here today not because they were doing something that we called them doing and they were, the marshal had to be called other than domestic dispute that shouldn't have ever come to this board. And now, I mean, what's gonna happen? If we put Old Heimleman on, who's gonna say that he's not, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, my fear is, you know, if it goes, if the, if the conditional use goes with the land, if you were to sell, that the next owner...
Well, we're not giving a conditional use of the land, I mean, a conditional use don't run with the land.
That's our...
Pretty sure a conditional reuse doesn't run with the land, it's just for the current owner. So, so if we're giving a conditional use, we're giving it for these under this circumstances with a preference that the marshal's not calling out, there's no issues, they're taking care, I mean, these kids doing, I mean, they're going out, I mean, what time you get up in the morning to go feed pigs? Before school?
And we have a...
Yeah, you got a kid going up before school every day feeding a pig. They're coming home and feeding pigs, they're coming home cleaning out troughs, they're walking them, they're doing what they're supposed to do. And to put an expiration date on that because while the four of us may agree, what's the next board or the next set of commissioners or, you know, like I said, if there's a complaint and a real issue from, from the neighbors, I kinda, that's what I see. But as, as far as this deal goes, we're looking at kids learning responsibilities and doing what they should be doing and doing, I mean, there's a lot of stuff in this county for kids to be doing, this, this not teaching responsibilities. And for me, I grew up doing this stuff, you know, I shoot, I showed pigs, I showed cows, I showed goats, I showed whatever, and you can do it and do it responsibly. Now, if you're not, it's a whole different story. But we're not getting those complaints from, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Okay.
All right.
She had a letter prepared, so...
Okay. Thanks for your time. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of the conditional use request? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition of the request? All right, public hearing for item number one is closed.
Okay. Further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to, to pass it, but I make a motion to pass it without limitations other than making sure that there's no complaints from neighbors and residents for issues.
Second.
All right, got a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
We will move on to item number two. It is a conditional use request from Dusty Vincent, 3231 Highway 145 East in Ollie, parcel 055017. Property is currently zoned as residential single. The proposed action to be taken is to grant a conditional use permit to utilize the property as a satellite storage area for WW Customs Auto Sales. The property is 2.5 acres and is zoned for residential use. The property owner would like to utilize the property as a satellite storage area for overflow of classic cars from WW Customs Auto Sales, which is a local business. The reason the request is being made is that a complaint was filed with the county marshal's office and the chief marshal asked the property owner for a solution to the problem. The solution presently being requested is to garner a conditional use permit to allow for the proposed use. The property has adequate space to allow for the storage area and is presently utilizing approximately 20,900 square foot within the rear yard of the subject property for vehicle storage. Approximately 30-plus vehicles are located onsite. The present vehicle storage area is approximately 40 feet from the principal structure onsite and is located approximately 220 feet from the front yard property line. The closest vehicle to the left yard setback is approximately 55 feet from the property line, while the closest vehicle to the right yard setback is approximately 86 feet from the property line as of the most recent satellite imagery available. The property immediately to the left and across the street is zoned agricultural residential and is 60.32 acres in size. No home is located to the left and a residence is located across the street. The property immediately to the right is 2.29 acres in size and zoned residential single. A residence sits on the approximate middle of the property. To the rear are two properties. One is 25.76 acres, zoned for agricultural industrial purposes, and the other 16.92 acres zoned for agricultural residential purposes. Accordingly, and generally speaking, most of the surrounding properties are large in lot size and zoned for rural agricultural purposes. The property that bears the most immediate concern is the neighbor immediately to the right. Recommendation from staff is to provide temporary approval through December 31st, 2026?
Five.
2026.
It is 2026.
Mm-hmm. Temporary approval is contingent upon establishing a screening fence around the area in which the vehicles are required to be stored. The property owner should work with the marshal's office for a permanent storage solution in an area zoned specifically for commercial purposes such as the main location of the business. Questions or discussion from the board?
Do we know what the initial complaint was?
Dump vehicles?
Yeah, okay.
Do we, do we have an ordinance? I guess we have ordinance against... Okay, go ahead.
Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the request?
Y'all? I can tear this up before I get done. I've got some handouts for ya. Thank you for letting me speak with you tonight, I appreciate it. My name is Teresa Vincent, I live at 1123 Rock Creek Road. The property we're talking about is at 3231 Highway 145. It's my mother-in-law's house. I represent WWE Customs Auto Sales, a small, family-run business based here in Tacoa. We specialize in preserving and restoring vintage vehicles and rare classic parts, many of which date back as far as 1920s. So we have cars that start from 1920 and go forward to like 2011. Our work is not just about automobiles, it's about history, craftsmanship, and passion. We've proudly served the community for over a decade, and over the last three years, we've seen incredible growth in demand for our classic parts inventory. I'm here today to respectfully request approval for the use of an additional property as commercial storage lot for our overflow inventory. And I want to be very clear, this would not be an active sales location, there would be no signage, no increase in public traffic, and no disruption to the surrounding area. The site would be secured, clean, and professionally maintained. We're gonna put up a fence and border with some trees to buffer it out. There's already a lot of buffer around through there. I sent the commissioners a video and I'm glad to forward that to you too. There is a lot of buffer already, but we can put up, and we've already bought those trees too, to put up. We understand that the surrounding land is primarily residential and we take that very seriously. We are members of this community too, and we very value the quiet, peaceful character of our neighborhoods. Our intention is not to interrupt that harmony, but to responsibly expand in a way that respects local zoning, our neighbors' concerns, and the integrity of the land. To that end, we've personally reached out to those in the area and are proud to share that we've obtained 24 signatures from the surrounding neighbors in support of our proposal. Their encouragement means a great deal to us, and we believe it reflects the trust we've built and our commitment to being good neighbors. We're also willing to install fencing, visual buffers, or other barriers as needed, and we will comply fully with any guidelines or stipulations the board recommends. Again, we're not asking to run a business from this site just to use it as secure off-site storage to alleviate overflow. It is also important to highlight the broader economic and promotional impact of our business. To date, we have sold customers, parts, and cars in 21 different states. We've had people travel to us from North Carolina, Chicago, Florida, and Alabama specifically to purchase parts or vehicles. When they visit, they spend money locally on gas, food, and hotels, which brings direct revenue into Stevens County and supports other local businesses. We've even welcomed international customers from Canada and Australia who travel here specifically to view our inventory in person. That kind of reach is not just a win for our business, but for our community as a whole. Beyond in-person visits, we've worked hard to put Stevens County on the map through digital outreach. We operate a YouTube channel with 2,263 subscribers where we showcase our restorations, customer stories, and the charm of our local area. This platform helps bring national and international attention to both our work and the community. We also maintain a Facebook account with 771 followers and an up-to-date website that allows customers to browse our inventory online. All these platforms help drive interest and tourism to the region. I also encourage each of you to take a drive down and view the proposed storage lot yourselves. You'll see firsthand how well-maintained it is and how neatly the yard is landscaped. We take pride in keeping the space clean, orderly, and respectful of the surrounding area, just as we would continue to do with granted approval. Granting us this opportunity will allow us to grow sustainably better, serve our customers across the region and around the world, and help continue contributing to the local community. It would also help prevent spillover at our location on Highway 17. We're proud of what we've built and we hope to continue earning your trust. I welcome any questions you may have and will be more than happy to discuss how we can make this storage solution fit seamlessly within the community. Do you have any questions?
You mentioned you've already purchased the trees, Craig.
We have, and even if you don't grant it, we're still gonna put them up.
Sure. What's your plan and timeline for a fence?
If you approve, we're ready to start.
Okay.
And the complaint was on junk cars. When you think of junk, you think of cars that's been wrecked and, you know, later model cars that windshield's crashed in, things like that. Now, granted, these are restorable vehicles, they're from the 1920s and up. Some are missing parts, some have a lot of rust on them, but, you know, people restore that same thing into a rat rod era, if you know what a rat rod is.
Are these cars sort of a revolving, like you, you get them in and you restore them, or are they just like parts cars that you park there? And how long, like what would be the typical stay? If you pulled a car in there, how long would it typically stay on?
It varies, you know. For a while, it was a revolving door, we were back and forth, and then when this came about, it kind of gotten stagnant, we just haven't moved them. My husband has some medical issues, so he hasn't been able to move things in and out as regularly as he would. But typically what we do is that we get room on the lot, we move them up there. We don't take parts off down there. If it's gonna be a parts car, it comes to Highway 17. So as they are there, when they're delivered to that area, they stay like that until we move them to 17, somebody buys them, we continuously advertise them on Facebook, our website, YouTube, Instagram, all of those areas.
All the cars on here would be restorable? This is not, this is not like a salvage yard or something like that?
No, they're all restorable. Everybody has a different opinion of what's restorable.
Sure.
You know, but if you've ever been to a car show, you've seen rat rods out there that, you know, have floors rusted out in them and they're still driving them. So everybody's opinion is different of that.
And how many cars would, I think you said you have 30 there at this time?
Somewhere around there, yeah.
How many do you think you would have?
At the max down there, we hope not to have any more than 30 at a time because we're, we've been selling things. We sold one last week to North Carolina, we sold one this week to Atlanta. So it's a revolving door on us, and we've been working on this for the last three years, and it just has took off. I mean, it's just took off really good lately. So I hate to see our endeavors shattered by not having this, because it's really taken off. And if you, if you're welcome to drive down there, they're all in a row, grass is cut, we round up around every car. My mother-in-law works hard to keep that yard nice. And we have someone else come in that weed eats and she works really hard at it. She's been told...
So she lives in the house?
She does. Yeah, her neighbors, some of her neighbors actually said, you know, she has the prettiest yard around, so she takes pride in her flowers.
And the, are we sure that the December 2026 was correct?
If you look on the report down there at the recommendation, it has December 2026.
I think it...
Yeah, it was 2006.
Appears.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering if it's supposed to be 2025. Really six months would be time for the fence.
Oh, yeah. I think he's thinking more long-term to give them a more, to work with the marshal to get a more permanent... So it sounds like the staff is recommending the temporary approval in trying to encourage you guys to come up with a more permanent storage solution.
Yes.
So is your plan to make this more permanent, or are you guys searching other options to...
We would like to be able to have them all on 17, but like I said, our business has took off. I don't wanna commit and say we can have them all up there. You know, but we will do our best, but I can't commit to that. I mean, it's really taken off great, and I, I hate to shatter our income and our endeavors going forward to say that we would have them up there.
Yeah, so the recommendation was the temporary approval through 20, December, next year, 2026.
And if, and if that's the approval and that's what's approved, we will have them gone by that time. You know, I just ask to keep us in mind as far as our business and things of that nature goes, but we do hope to have them up at the lot. I just don't commit to that at this time.
So as far as your business, it sounds like it's a good problem to have, you're, you're taking off, but you're having a hard time keeping up with the storage.
Yes, yes.
How many acres are you on, on 17?
Um, it's like a...
I guess how far back does that go?
It's just a half acre right there, pretty much. That's what part of our problem is.
Looks like you've emptied it just in the last week or so.
He's been rearranging them, yeah.
Looks like they spaced there.
Yeah, he's been rearranging because he got sick, like I said, has some medical issues, and so they just kind of got haphazardly put in there. And so he's been taking them out, putting them in rows, so you see, we're trying to move forward with trying to do that. And we rent property behind our location from Georgia Power to have extra room there too, so we rent property behind that on 17 from Georgia Power.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of the conditional use request? All right, go ahead.
I'm echoing what my wife said, my beautiful wife. This thing, we had the car lot, they've had it ever since 2007, and then when me and my wife got married, her brother, he went to be a machinist, so I become a used car salesman. So when Keener come in, y'all know Sandy Keener, when he come in, business kind of slowed down. Well, when the Co-Automal come in, it died. So we had to diversify, and I always had old cars there at the lot, and everybody come in there, always asked about those old cars. So I taught my wife and my father-in-law and them into maybe doing the old car thing 'cause it's popular. And whenever we started doing it, I went to Cannon, Georgia down here, Colin Morgan, and he was selling off a bunch of old cars, so I bought a few old cars and it led to just, it exploded on me. So it's just me, my wife, and my mom doing all this, and like she said, I had a retina detached and just everything just went, you know... And like she said, I had a retina detached and just everything just went, you know. So I, I'm trying to do the best I can and just, you know, just trying to live the American dream. And I do, I work as hard as I can work, and we've been trying to straighten up the lot because everything just kind of exploded. And I've been working as hard as I can to get everything straightened up there at the lot because another guy in Livonia, he had bought a bunch of property and there's a bunch of cars on it. Well, he come to me because he met me down at Cullen's, and I told him I'd come down and take a look, but we went down, took a look at his place. While we was down there, we bought the cars that's on the property plus kind of cleaned his property at the same time, and it just progressed to another one, word of mouth. And it seems like that's what we started doing, and it just, it just exploded. So down at the house, I've got 68, 69 Camaros. Y'all know how much those things are worth. I've got a 35, two 35, 1935 Ford five-winder Coupes. You know how much those things are worth. Got him a pile of Supersports, 60, 62, 63 Novas, got the little Chevy twos. I got Ford Falcons, you know. It's got a lot of inventory, it's worth a lot of money. And it's not junk, I promise you it's not junk. But the cars are in different stages. People come, they buy cars from us, they buy parts from us, and again, living the American dream. So that's all I got to say. I just hope y'all work with us, and I'm not, I'm not doing anything out of the way, just trying to make a living. And like she said, we keep the property up. Our house, mom's house, we've always took care of our property, always kept everything cut, you know, and people gonna have opinions about anything you do anymore. I just wanna, I just wanna live and let live.
I'm the one that lives there. I'm the one that keeps it all clean, and I don't know what it is, just like y'all said. I mean, I was turned in by a neighbor. He's the only one that has complained on the property. And I don't know what the issue is, but all I ever wanted was for them to come to me personally and talk to me. And I've went and spoke to all the neighbors across the road, behind me, I've approached every single one of them, and they said that none of them has an issue. That what I do on my property, they say, is my business, and they couldn't understand why I got complained on because I keep mine clean. And they said they figured if it been anybody, it would've been one of them, they said. And that made me feel good, that my neighbors, you know, felt that way about me. But I have approached every one of them, I've went up and down the road and talked to each and every one. And all I'm asking is for y'all to please give us a change, to keep it going, because it is very nice to see elderly people come into our lot. And you'd be surprised, these 80 and 90-year-old couples that come in there and look at these cars and they walk around and they come out reminiscent. And there was like an 80-something-year-old man the other day from Raby County come down, and he bought one, and his dream is to be able to rebuild that car before he passes away for his grandkid. So if, you know, that's one we got, all we got, and they are rebuildable. But I'm just asking for a change. But I've got to tell you, I do live at 3231 Highway 145, but please just give us a change.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of the request? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition?
Complaining committee, citizens?
I'm Eric Addison, I own 3251 Highway 145. I am the complaining party. Whatever, everything that Teresa and Dustin, which I have known for a good many years, says is true. They're absolutely good stewards of the land as far as keeping their yard neat. However, they're also currently in violation of county ordinance. And my 75-year-old parents, who do live in the house, I own the house, but they live in it and have since me and Chris went to high school together, have to wake up every morning, look out their front door and see basically hulls of, yes, restorable cars, but hulls nonetheless. They're hulls that don't really move. I, I beg to differ with them respectfully, but I don't see a whole lot of movement. In 2016, 2017, they were all removed. Former marshal we had in this county had them move them. Little by little, over the years, they have come back, and now they have come back with a vengeance. I wish them the best of luck with their business. They're making so much money, I would suggest, logistically, buying property somewhere closer that is already zoned commercial. That would make more sense than interrupting the life of all of their people around them. Every neighbor that has not complained is not the one that has a direct sightline to the yard. My parents do. Yes, when the trees are full, you don't have as bad, but when the tree, when the leaves fall, you do. I mean, I feel, I feel like we should at least have an ordinance be enforced. Right now, we're giving chance upon chance to get it right. I don't, I don't understand how you can ask for a zone change when you're already in violation of the ordinance. And I also feel that a contingent's own change may open up the door to some other things. What happens if the car business isn't good and they want to move porta-potties or something else that makes money down there? Something else that could maybe the neighbors don't like. And there's always a rodent factor, there's mosquito factor, no doors, sometimes no windshields, no hoods, rainwater collects. Georgia summers are hot, I've lived them all my life. What, what's to say that some of the diseases they have in Louisiana aren't here in Georgia? My parents are old. They're, they're in bad health, just like a lot of people. Why put them through that? Trees are gonna take time to grow. You plant little cypress depending on the soil it's in, depending on how much rainwater you get out there, it could take 20 years. My parents would be dead. You know, I may be dead. But for 20 years, I gotta look at junk cars. And also, my parents' house is situated on top of a hill. There's not a fence tall enough to be able to hide it. I doubt there's a tree tall enough to be able to hide it. Now, I'm not saying that they do not mow around the cars, they do. I'm not saying that they don't keep them themselves. They do. I'm not saying that she doesn't keep her house neat and the yard neat, they do. But I do know that as far as the neighbors go, I'm the only one that has to see it, except for the ones that live behind us, then they only see it when they pass by to their houses that are not in sight line of these cars. I'm thinking of property value, I'm thinking of value of life, I'm thinking of, you know, what would my grandkids want to see, or what would my children want to see when they go visit their great-grandparents? You want to see junk cars? Or would you rather see cows? Or would you rather see grass? Or rather see anything other than a nuisance? Something that the county already has an ordinance against and something that has already been complained about numerous times by every neighbor down there, at least the neighbors on my side of 145. Code enforcement is something we're gonna have to do in this county. We're gonna have to do it whether we like it or not. I am a red-blood American like everybody else. I, I think that you should be able to use your property in any way you want to do it, as long as it doesn't cause harm or degradation of the property beside you. That's wrong. Some people say I'm not Christian for feeling that way, but I think that do no harm is probably one of the most Christian things I can do. So, no, I'm not in favor of it. I'm not in favor of any of it. I do wish them the best of luck in their business, I just wish it best of luck on 17. Thank you. Questions from me? All right, thank you.
I'll allow a three-minute rebuttal if you want to speak. Three minutes.
One thing that was said, when I sat up, walked around and talked to all the neighbors, these one, they are on, they're on, like my house is sitting this way, all right, they're over here, they're way back in there. I got another neighbor that sits way back in there on the other side of the car, where the cars is at. All right, when he comes up his driveway, he is right there next to them. I went back there and talked to the man the other day, and he said he wasn't gonna complain about it, that it was cars. And he also told me, he said he stopped and checked them out because he was interested in some, and he said he raised a hood on one, and it just happened it didn't have a motor. He said, or he's gonna make an offer on it. And he said he has no problem with it. And he's closer to seeing the cars than they are. So that's what I wanted to clear up. They're not the only ones that sees cars. And I've got a house, I've got a highway there, right in front of my house. If you ever come down to, there you can see it. I mean, it comes at 145, I'm right there on the road. I've got a house straight across from me, they're looking straight at it. And I've talked to them, I've talked to every one of them up and down that road, nobody has a problem. Nobody. And you can go down there and talk to them yourself, but they weren't able to come tonight because they all work. And they said if they got off in time, they would come. But I did want to clear that up, that they're not the only ones that sees the cars.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, heard the discussion. Any further comments, discussion from the board?
I feel like the, our director's made a pretty, what I would consider fair recommendation here. I think the recommendation is to give the, give you a little time, but this is, should not be a permanent solution on, on this property. I think he's given you ample time here, or the recommendation is from all through end, to the end of next year. And at that time, that would be, that would expire, and in which you'd have to either come back here or, or just, I don't know, that's my opinion. That's pretty fair, but any other?
Yeah, I kind of agree with you. I mean, one, we can't just push them out the door right now, but two, they do what they're supposed to do and are looking for, and, and I mean, you know, it's great if you can find a place and move it between now and then, but real estate ain't cheap, so do the best you can.
I would even add in as far as fencing sooner rather than later.
I was, thought about the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
So I'm, I make a motion that we take the full recommendation from staff.
I second that motion.
All right. Got a motion of the second. All the favors say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
All right, Brett reminds me now, the, we're just to recommend the board, so the way this works is staff makes the recommendation, they bring it to us, we have it here and here, we recommend, but you'll have to go to one more meeting with the full commissioners, they'll have the final say-so on the approval or not, so please go and plead your case with the commissioners as well, they'll, they're the ones that have the final, final vote, so.
Okay.
Item number three.
Item number three is a variance request from Richard Abbott, 1243 Ridgemore Drive to Coa, parcel 063F, 014B. Property is currently zoned as residential single. The proposed action to be taken is to grant a variance of nine feet to the left-side yard setback for a total of one foot left-side yard setback. The property owner is requesting a variance to allow for a reduction to the left-side yard setback of nine feet for a total of one foot left-side yard setback. Chapter 59, Article 8, Section 59-803 of the Stevens County Code of Ordinances requires that for lakefront lots, the side yard setback be set at 10 feet, and thus a variance would be required to reduce the setback to one foot. The lots on Ridgemore Drive, particularly in this section of the neighborhood, are longer and more narrow than other lots in the county, limiting development on the individual lots. The property owner purchased the home as constructed in its current footprint and is now requesting that a garage be allowed on the property. However, due to the present confines of the law, would require the variance to construct the garage. Reducing the side yard setback of the property in question would not affect the setbacks of any surrounding neighbors nor limit the use of their property in granting the request. Recommendation from staff is to approve as requested.
Okay, before we start pulling here, I, I own property directly next door to this, so I'll be recusing myself from, from the vote.
All right.
And the discussion.
Does that mean I need to take over for your?
Chris has said I can still call the vote.
All right, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the request?
Probably only me. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Rick Abbott. One quick correction to that, last name is misspelled, there are two Ts, there are one T in that. My name is Rick Abbott, I live at 1243 Ridgemore Drive, Coa, Coa, Georgia, 30577. It's about 10 miles east of Coa. It is a lot that sits directly on Lake Hartwell. This lot and all of those lots, as you can tell by the pictorial that's up there, they're very long, which is super nice because they sit, like you can't even see my house from Ridgemore, you can see the roof. So it's real nice that it sits so far back and you can't hear any road noise. The problem is, they cut them very, they're very narrow. So when you get down there, the house is a two-story house, but, but it's really not, it's really not set up for a garage unless you want to cut the footprint of the size of that house down, it's about 3,000 square feet. And I'll admit, you know, my, we're traveling through here in our RV, we were on a year and a half just sabbatical, and my wife, my wife found that house, and she's like, that's the one, you gotta buy it. I was like, oh, Lord, okay, so it doesn't have a garage, honey, we wanted a garage. I said, don't worry about it, we'll, we'll see if we can build one. Well, my wife, we were okay, we weren't even gonna build one, she goes out, she buys a brand-new GV70. It's a, one of those new fancy cars that I don't want anything to do with, but she had to have it, so now, now we need a, we need a garage to put it in. So anyway, that's what kind of drove it. I have stopped, talked to Scott Stroud, who is the adjoining property owner. We, we've known each other about, about two and a half years, and everything seems good with us. My request, it is, the code, I guess, is a 10-foot variance from the property, property line. Scott and I have talked through it. What's reasonable is what I want. I, if Scott would've come back to me and said, oh, gosh, Rick, no, I really don't want it for this, that, and the other, I honestly would've just said, okay. Because I didn't, I didn't move here to have a dispute with a neighbor, right? I, I don't, I don't, nobody wants that. Scott seemed okay with it, we talked about what would be reasonable, I, I knew building directly on the property line probably would be a no-go, but I did. directly on the property line probably would be a no-go, but I did the measurements, and I, I tried to be as detailed as I could in my write-up. If I get one foot off the property line, and that is for the foundation, Scott and I talked about it yesterday, he gave me a call, told me we were coming up for tonight, and the, the eve also, you know, will not go over the property line, so I understand the eve would be like one foot off the back. I don't even know if there's going to be an eve in the back to it, like I could care less if there's an eve in the back. I wanted a couple in the front, so it matches the house, I want it to make, I want it to look like it was built at the time the house was built, right? So anyway, I did the measurements, it would give me 19 feet, if I take off about a foot for the door in the front, and a foot in the back, just for the insulation, the two-by-fours, the, the hardy board, et cetera, gives me about 17 feet. That's going to give me only, and one of our cars won't, won't fit, it cannot fit, which is okay, because I plan to sell it, we're, we're kind of downsizing for the cars. My wife's car, it will have one foot in the front and one foot in the rear, and that is it, in that garage. If I make it any, if I make that depth any greater, then it's going to impede the view of the front of the house. And that was the other thing I needed to bring up, in talking with Scott, I'm not just requesting that variance change from 10 feet from the property line, but, but one foot, it's also going in front of the house, and I don't mean directly in front, if this is the house and the road's out here, it's going to sit at a 90-degree angle, corner to corner with the foundation. I'm sorry?
Protrude out, umbrella.
Um, it, it's not going to protrude in the, if, if you look at the corner of the house, it, it will line up with it at a 90-degree angle, so it won't impede on the front of the house if I keep it at that depth, and I really want to keep it at that depth, because it would look, it would just look crazy if it covered up part of the front. But it is in front of the house. No, thank you, thank you.
But you can't see it from the road, right?
You, you can't really see the house, you can see the roof, yeah, you can see the roof, but you can't, and maybe one of the, one of the fireplace stacks, but you can't, you can't see the house. That's one thing I love about, until, until the summer comes and you have to mow that yard, yeah, yeah, then that long yard is, has been challenging, I tell you. That's all, that's all I have, if you all have any questions, fire away.
Thank you, Rick.
I understand, thank you Scott, I understand you guys, and Scott had kind of explained the process to me, so this board just makes a recommendation of county commissioners, so I'll show up, I think that sign in front of the yard, Scott, says, I think it's July 30th, I might be wrong, but.
22nd.
Oh, it's 22nd, thank you. So I'll be at that meeting, so if this gets approved at that meeting, what is the next step?
Once, once it, if it's approved that evening, then it's approved, you just.
Oh, well you were so pleasant the last time, I don't mind doing that. You are super nice. Is there a time period where, where the county says, okay, you have approval, but you have to have it built in a year, is there something like that? Okay, because.
It'll, it'll depend on the permit at that point, because as long as you on that property.
But I have to get the permit renewed every summer?
You're approved to build it?
I understand that.
So yeah, as long as you on that property, if, if the commissioners approve it, and we, or, if the commissioners approve it, once you have that approval, as long as you on the property, now if you sell that property, and you don't have it built, the next person's got to come do the whole thing over again. But as long as you on that property, if you decided you want it 10 years, it might be a little bit hairy, because won't nobody remember it, but.
Listen, I'm going to tell you what, we found our property, and if you saw my dock, Scott, Scott seen my dock, I'm going to die sitting out there on that dock in that swing, so I'm not going anywhere.
I've been on that property before, I, I can imagine, so, but yeah, just whenever, whenever they approve it, if they approve it, once you get ready, go build it, get your permits from her, and you're good to go, and.
Thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Rick.
I make the motion.
We're going to wait. You're going to wait for the others.
Uh, well, I'm not for or against, obviously, but I would like to speak as a cit, as a citizen, rather than a member of the board.
You got to go to the other side.
I'm going to speak from up here. Uh, my only concern, and I've spoken to Christian, I just want this on the record, that Christian and I have spoken, my concern was that there is a section of code where the minimum separation of buildings is 20 feet, so I wanted, and Christian confirmed that this was the case, that his variance will not affect my setback, in other words, I can still build within 10 feet of the property line.
Okay.
So I just want that put on the record.
Make that motion.
Alright, is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the request? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Alright, the public hearing for item number three is now closed.
Alright, any further discussion or motion?
And for the record, everything that he said, you said was true and accurate.
He was, he was name dropping you pretty, pretty good.
I make a motion that we approve as long as it don't affect the neighbor's setbacks on future building sites.
Okay.
Second that.
Alright, got a motion second, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item number four.
Alright, item number four is a variance request from Carolyn Holcomb, 369 Isbell Road Extension, East Denali, parcel 0548070. Property is currently zoned as residential single, the proposed action to be taken is to grant a variance to allow for a second principal use on property less than two acres. Chapter 59, Articles 15, Section 59, 1605 of the Stevens County Code of Ordinances requires that only one principal building and its accessories may be constructed on any lot intended for use under two acres, and thus a variance is required to allow for an additional principal use on the subject property. The lot in question is approximately a quarter of an acre, under the requirements to allow for an additional principal use, as Section 59-1605 of the ordinance allows for a second principal use for a property two acres or larger. Across the street is a property 32 acres in size, zoned for agricultural intensive purposes. Immediately to the right is a parcel approximately five acres in question, zoned agricultural residential. There is a large amount of land surrounding the property that should not cause any adverse effect in the area. Recommendation from staff is to approve as requested. Are there any questions or discussion from the board? Okay, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the request?
My name is Arlen Holcomb, and this is Karen, instead of Carolyn Holcomb. C-A-R-Y-N. I thought I'd have to find somebody else to bring. This is very simple, we own 1.87, I think, hundredths of an acre, and we need two, and we want to put a mobile home, a single-wide mobile home behind our house, to the far back, for grandkids to live in.
Little home, they got three kids, and they're in a two-bedroom house, and you, I think everybody's aware of how rent is, and how, how hard it is to find affordable housing in this area. That's what it's, that's what, I'd help them.
Our neighbor to the, if you're looking at the front, to the right, Justin Carpenter, I spoke with him, he don't have a problem at all. Left is a bunch of cows, and they don't seem to mind. All we want. I'll answer any question you got, but I don't know.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
In opposition? Item number four is closed.
Alright, any further discussion or motion?
Motion approved.
Second. Alright, got a motion second, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Alright, I believe we're going to take, if I'm not mistaken, we're going to take the next two items, are these adjoining properties?
Yes.
Uh, I think they're both rezoning, so I think we're going to take these items together.
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, let's see here. Five and six is a rezoning request from Verbena Roots Properties, located at Memorial Drive, and that parcel number is 043117, and property 558 Meadowbrook Drive, parcel number 043100. Properties are currently zoned as agricultural residential, the proposed action to be taken is to rezone the subject properties to residential single for residential purposes. The property owner would like to rezone the subject properties from ag-residential to residential single, to subdivide into lots for future residential development. The property touches residential property on the northern side and on the eastern side, and a rezoning to residential single would provide a lower intensive use in the area than the currently zoned agricultural use, and would provide a buffer for the agricultural intensive properties to the west and east, and commercial industrial properties to the south. Recommendation from staff is to approve as requested. Are there any questions or discussion from the board?
I believe in our, okay, so this is all.
Go ahead, Scott.
I'm sorry, I'm a little confused with the packet, I think this is items.
Five and six.
Well, six and mine is Champion.
So the way that it's done in your packet, the way Christian did the reports, is five and six is item five, they're both on that same report.
Okay, okay, very good.
Yeah.
Alright, very good. Go ahead.
Champions and Champion Legacy Research.
That's going to be six.
I got you.
That's going to be your answer.
Okay. Question back to the, be item seven.
Also, would, would it not work just leaving it like it is, is there a problem with that? Dividing, I mean with a pyramid, I mean to me, it'd be a benefit to the landowner to leave it AR, because they have more of a, a ability, but you're going to limit what you can do, whereas a pyramid zoning, this in effect, they can drop it and build houses.
Agriculture residential, your road frontage has to be.
Okay.
Alright, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of the rezoning request?
Good evening, I'm Hugh Champion, I live at 1352 Davis Road, there's no address at this property right now, but it's Memorial Drive and Meadowbrook. The, the current zoning, AR, allows for 150 feet road frontage for each lot, with a minimum of one acre. Uh, rezoning to RS allows for a minimum of 100 feet at the road, but it's still, it's still one acre lot size. It's not going to change a whole lot on my end, I'm still in the middle of, of lot layout, trying to figure out how to lay the lots out. There are some terrain features on that property where if I was allowed to do 100 feet instead of 150 feet, it would be helpful, and that's really all it is. The, we're going to put covenants in place for whoever, whatever buyer buys those lots, so that a certain type of house has to be built, so. Wanted to, wanted to fit in, sorry, with the community that's already there, and RS will fit in with the, with the properties to the north as well. Most of the lots, just, just with the way that, there's a, there's a creek that kind of runs through the middle of that property, and that will be the common line in the back, so from, from the Meadowbrook and Fieldcrest side, those lots will go back to the creek, and then from the Memorial side, those lots will go back to that, they'll share a line on that creek. With the depth of those lots, the average lot size is going to be over two, over two acres, two and a half acres, there will be a few, if, if we can rezone, there would be a few in the acre and a half size.
But all of them will come off the existing road frontage?
Correct. I, I didn't quite hear your question, I would.
Oh, I was just asking them, you know, with the, and I know why you're doing it now, but with the, with the AR, the pyramid zoning, yeah, but the 50-foot.
Yeah, that's all it is. Yeah, the last, the last property I divi, I subdivided was AR.
Powell Road.
Yeah, so, but the regulation got changed since then, so I just wanted to get back to that if I could.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Alright, is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the rezoning requests?
So, yeah, there were one, looks like somebody.
Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Have questions?
More welcome to come up here and speak, sir, speak to us, and we'll direct questions, or Scott will direct questions back to him, but yeah, be more glad for you to come up here and speak.
Dan Morrow, I live at 388 Meadowbrook, which is that point on the property there. My concern is, we have a terrible time with traffic right now. A number of years ago, for some reason, the county took down the sign and stopped the truck traffic from coming through to Meadowbrook and Fieldcrest. Now we have semis all day long going through there. They never did anything to the bridge that was stopping them from coming across, but yet they're allowing them to come across now. I've voiced my concern a number of times about it, they keep cutting when they come up, they'll make the wrong turn, they cut across my property, and they've taken the stop sign out four times in less than one year. The county has yet to take any of the posts out that broke off, so I've got these posts sticking up like this, that I have to really watch when I'm mowing, which I don't really mind, because if a semi comes over, maybe it'll give them a flat tire this time, next time, but we're just a little concerned about the traffic that we already have. If they would stop the truck traffic, the traffic would not be nearly as bad. I mean, it's bad at lunchtime, because everybody's trying to go to town at 70 miles an hour up to there, instead of going the speed limit. The other thing is that during the construction, it's going to cause even more truck traffic in there, and our road is really getting bad. Fieldcrest is just terrible right now. Meadowbrook is getting just about as bad. My second concern is, at the end of Meadowbrook, trying to get out onto 17 has become almost impossible sometimes. If we add this subdivision, and keep on with the industrial property going down through, people going down, how's that going to affect us? I can't get out on 17, it takes me five, 10 minutes sometimes, especially if I'm pulling a piece of equipment. So those are my concerns, like I said, I'm not against it, but I just, I want to make sure that we're going to take care of the traffic out there if we do this. The other thing is that, the other piece of property that they're wanting, I might as well bring it up, to develop for the rental buildings, it's going to dump out right there at 17 on Meadowbrook, which is going to cause us some more congestion, so the county's going to have to figure out how to address that if they're going to approve this, because otherwise, we're just going to have chaos out there. Sunday's is really good with the church, because there's hundreds and hundreds of cars going by there every Sunday. going by there every Sunday morning for three services. So are we going to add even more congestion when we bring in more people into the neighborhood? Then my last concern is, I haven't heard anything about restrictions. They're not going to develop the land, they just want to sell the property. If they sell the property, who's buying it? What are they going to put in there? We're a little concerned about the size of houses, the double wides or single wides, what kind of people are going to be moving into our neighborhood? We've got a really nice neighborhood right now, we'd like to keep it that way.
Ask for that quest, that last one for him?
Okay, that's what I want to find out.
Could you be a little, a little, could you give a little more specific other than we're putting, I mean, because, could you tell them kind of what you're planning on? I mean, the houses over off Tower are nice, I mean, I know who's building everything.
Yeah, yeah, well, that...
Are you going to put in 1,200 square foot housing, or are you going to...
I think we're going to up the size, I would like to see houses that are comparable to what's there now. Definitely not mobile homes.
Okay.
That's not the plan.
I think, we can't do anything about the traffic, it's our problem, and the county might can, but...
I agree with you, the roads are terrible.
Hopefully that...
Yeah, we, we don't have anything set in stone on covenants, but we are, we're going to put something in place that... I think of the, the homes that are, that over on Quell Run type, kind of a house like that, just on a larger lot. I don't know if that helps.
That helps, yeah. That's all we were concerned about, because we've seen other ones that come in and just sell property, and then anything comes in there, so.
Yeah, well, yeah, I've been able to stay involved on my last project, you know, kind of to the end, and I...
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition?
My name's Eddie Powers, I live at 936 Memorial Drive. I'm that little angled place with the little yellow block right in the center of it. Right where the dark green and the light green come together up there on Memorial Drive. Dennis knows where I live.
So this is the property across the road from you?
Yes, across the road from, yes.
Got it. That part of the Jackson place? I know this is not...
No, I think that was part of the Scott place, and his family inherited that property. And my question too is really on the same frame that Mr. Dan over here, and I'm sorry, I forgot his last name, and I'm not used to talking, so I get a little nervous here. But do I understand from your write-up...
I'm sorry, sir.
I apologize. If I read this correctly, out of the 39.92 acres, they're going to put 14 to 17 lots, correct?
Correct.
And according to your ordinance, you have to have 20% of common area in a subdivision? Is that correct?
So, whereas, depending on how he does it, it may not kick into the subdivision regulations. So if he does ways that people, you're not going through subdivision regulations, so. So, we may have to, I think, we just redid all of that. Five lots makes a subdivision, four, four lots even with, if they're coming off the Better check that. We just, we went through this, same scenario, you know, it's a big issue, road frontage subdivisions, that we're trying, you know, a lot of counties are trying to catch up. And I, you know, understand the development cost and it's difficult to put in a road.
What I understand is just going to take...
Correct, that's correct.
So the first year...
But depending on how he develops this, and if he does a few lots at a time, like he's saying, it may take a little time, but it may not kick into that subdivision regulations, and that's where you, where you get into the 20%. That would be a traditional subdivision with putting in infrastructure and roads, probably avoid, avoid all that.
Okay, so my second question was about the infrastructure, so they won't be putting any roads or anything like that in there?
Doesn't, yeah, doesn't sound like it.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
Just driveways, just driveways.
Driveways coming off of Memorial and off of Fieldcrest?
Correct.
Okay. And what's the average size of a lot going to be?
Well, he said, I believe he said...
It looks like the average size is...
He's just going to divide the lots, and then you'll have your own developer to come in and build.
Tell them, might as well sell them to builders.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
In opposition. Public hearing for items five and six is now closed.
I would like to make a comment, the roads are, need to be worked on.
I deliver hay there, farm in that area, and it's big, like Mr. Morris said, but we don't have any control over that, so.
I just don't want to contribute some more.
Right.
I mean, it could cut both ways, if you get more people in there, then maybe, you get more people in there, maybe that'll push the county to kind of fix it.
Yeah, that, that could be a positive. Maybe Mr. Champion...
Yeah.
Influence somebody on this.
It's a hundred foot, you're going to have a... Want to do other things, you may do that.
They may, they may open up, that's the minimum road frontage, they may open up wider in the back. Okay, any further questions or entertain a motion? Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All right, got a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
All right, item number seven is a conditional use request. Parcel 043145, property is currently zoned as commercial general. The proposed action to be taken is to grant a conditional use permit to utilize the property as a self-storage facility. The property is 5.45 acres and is zoned for general commercial use. The property owner would like to utilize the property as a self-storage facility. The property has adequate space to follow, to allow for the facility, and as proposed, the facility would encompass five storage buildings. All buildings would meet required setbacks as well as spacing between structures as required by the Stevens County Land Use Ordinance. The property is located on Highway 17 South, a large commercial corridor connecting Stevens County to other counties, and the proposed location would align with the commercial growth targeting this corridor. The nearest commercially zoned property is the Point Church, however, there are other commercially zoned properties along the route. Recommendation from staff is to approve as requested. Any comments or questions from the board? All right, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the request?
Just figured I'd do it all at once.
Yeah, yeah.
Welcome back.
Yeah, thank you. Hugh Champion, again, this property is, is directly touches the, where my office is, where our business office is. We bought that property in 17, probably. At that point, it was nine, closer to nine acres. We sold three or three and a half acres to the point so that they could expand their parking lot, and they needed runoff. So they built a retention pond on that three and a half acres that they bought. I own an easement to that, and it fits into the site plan for the, for the storage facility. So, you know, over the years, we have been studying and thinking about the best way to utilize that property, and storage facility seems like a good way to do that. So we, we have a, I don't know if the site plan was emailed, emailed out to you guys, but...
Yes, it was.
Okay, good. So you can, you can kind of see what the layout is right now. There's a little bit of room for expansion, but not much, so what you're seeing there is, is pretty close to the, what the eventual result will be. And Dan mentioned this, but the, the entrance will be on Memorial Drive, kind of on the southern tip of, of my property there. So there. It's right behind the, the old chicken house there, that's gone now, but it's, it's kind of right behind where that was, yeah. If you drew a straight line from that chicken house out to the road, that...
You're coming off of Meadowbrook.
Meadowbrook, I'm sorry, I said Memorial. I'm getting them all mixed up. Yeah, off of Meadowbrook.
It's already a drive.
Yes, there is, there is. And we, we have an, we have an access off of the four lane as well, but for traffic flow coming out of there, there's a break in the median, so traffic can go north and south if they come in off of, off of Meadowbrook.
We were hoping for the vegetable stand.
Yeah. Well, my mom retired, so...
Well, that was the original plan when you came in the first time.
Yeah, yeah, it, it was nice while it lasted, but she...
You start back running.
Yeah, I wish, I wish I had the time for it, yeah, I'd love to. That was fun, actually. But, but yeah, mama got tired of it. She aged out.
All right, any further question for him?
Thank you.
All right, thank you for your time. I, I would...
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Dennis.
The storage units, does that fit in the commercial again? So why are we doing this? Why are we altering the condition? He needs all setbacks up.
They may, uh...
I mean, we, I know it's in there, but why?
It may require a site plan, be my only guess. Yeah.
It requires board approval.
I know, but why?
I think this is like some of the other stuff we've been trying to get rid of, like the chicken house deal where, where we need to...
He meets, he meets all the requirements. Everything's, got to have a site plan, everything meets all the requirements. He ought to be able to come to you and get us up.
Well, I think every, every zoning category has permitted uses and conditional. So it, this must be in that list of conditional uses that, so if you look at the, just like chicken house, like you said, is a conditional...
That's the reason I asked him the question.
Yeah, so.
It needs to be took off. However, we work that out.
Storage bins are all conditional uses. All conditional...
No, it's all conditional use on, if you meet all the specs on whatever, he shouldn't have to come up here and beg, that's my opinion. And now you ain't begging, I know, but that's the way I see it. You know, once you meet, meet everything that you need...
Well, let's not, let's not get us out real quick, Dennis, then we'll have a few minutes of discussion at the end, and we'll get going.
My question, okay.
Let's finish up the...
Let's call a vote for him, and then we'll...
I move we approve.
Second.
All right, all right, got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries.
Now, while we're still here for a minute, I say that we set up a time, and y'all have to get with Christian, to where our board takes time to investigate some of these conditional uses, to see which ones we need to take out. I mean, chicken house, we've done that, there what, if you got 600-foot setback, you just build them. And we may not all agree, but let's look at the ones we might can agree on and, and come up with the appropriate setbacks to. Yeah, let's look at some of the ones...
I think, I mean, I'm not a planning expert, I shouldn't say that since I'm chairman, but I mean, I think there's a reason why they would have permitted in, in conditional uses.
Well, they had the chicken house.
He does have a, he does have a...
When Philadel had to ask, 1,200 acres...
That was ridiculous.
For six houses.
That's nothing to them, dude.
But, but also, I, I...
Build, it's a chicken farmers.
I got a different...
I agree.
I got a different one, Dennis, too, here.
All right, thank you.
We, we had everybody come up here asking, and we had the rolls, and Hart County had a 600-foot, and we could build them 300-foot, so the zone, I think we'll just take a look into it, whether we change anything or not, I don't know, but let's look into it, make our...
In case of reason, that's fine, but somebody needs to give me a reason better.
Well, I was just looking, uh, yeah. Okay, that's something we can definitely have a meeting.
I can see.
Let's have a meeting before...
I can see that there's probably things out there that we need to have.
What I'd like to do is we've, I was talking to Christian, I think we've, we've started the tiny home discussion. I think, I don't like having unfinished business when we discuss, so I think we need to wrap that up. And I talked to him, and he said when he gets back from vacation, we're going to try to settle that out, and once we get that settled, then we can talk.
Last thing...
Not try to get too many things going.
Last thing we got to do is we got to move this thing forward. Anyways, make a motion to dismiss.
All right. Second.
Got a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting.